Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen, eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District zero, 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 one and the Board of Education Service Unit Number Nineteen will be held Monday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. in the Viking Center and North High School, forty-four, ten, North Thirty-Sixth Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen, twelve, the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the room near the entrance door. Please stand and join us for the presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance led by Northwest High School's J R O T C. Please be seated. Thank you. Mr. Keelen, if you'd please lead us in the vision and mission.
O P S vision, every student, every day, prepared for success and the mission to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Present. Here. Here.
Present. Thank you. Do we have any motions to excuse absences? Seeing none, we'll move on to school spotlight. Mr. Masco.
Good evening, President Head, members of the Board and Interim Superintendent Ray. The O P S proud spotlight features North High Senior Miles Johnson, a Nebraska twenty-under-twenty honoree. The program celebrates youth statewide who are making a positive impact in their communities, demonstrating leadership, innovation, and dedication. And to begin, we'll welcome Special Education Department Head from North High, Kate Peterson. Ms. Peterson.
Thank you. Nominating Miles Johnson for this award was natural and easy because he exemplifies not only what this award stands for, but also O P S's portrait of a graduate and Omaha North excellence. Miles's standout performances in the classroom, in athletics, his service on student council, and most specifically, his commitment to service of his school, his peers in the Omaha community makes Miles uniquely fit to be recognized as the Community Blocks Twenty-under-Twenty exceptional young people. We all can't wait to see what he accomplishes next, so congratulations, Miles Johnson.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'm speaking tonight about receiving the Community Block Twenty-under-Twenty Award for my community service. I was nominated for this award because of volunteering work I do for my school and for Omaha community and the impact that it has on others. Volunteering is important to me because I want to support others and give back to my community. It makes me feel good that I get recommended to work with others because of people that, so that people know they can count on me. I'm an honor roll, play football, and do piloting in North High School and serve on student council, but I was nominated for this award for my community service. I help plans events at North High. I volunteer as a school mascot at North sporting events and events for younger students that I am directly involved in. I enjoy volunteering, my time to support clubs and activities, even though I'm not really directly involved in, and I'm grateful that my name is going out there in such a positive way for people in Omaha are starting to know who I am because of my community service. I'm involved in Omega Squires, a mentoring group run by Beta U Salon, chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity. With this group, I partner with local elementary schools to collect canned goods for those in need and also help organize a clothing drive before Christmas. I'm grateful and humbled to receive the Twenty-under-Twenty Award because there's only twenty people in Nebraska that can, that can receive this award and being one of them helps, is proud moment for me and my family. Thank you for noticing my work and thank you for noticing me for working in this community. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Johnson, thank, yeah, if you wouldn't mind coming back up. Thank you so much for your leadership in our schools and your leadership in our community. We greatly appreciate everything that you do. I'll open it up. Colleagues, questions? Ms. Erdenberger.
Congratulations, Miles, and to your wonderful family, who of course is a big part of your success. I may have heard, but I missed, what year in school are you?
I go Omaha North High School.
No, what year?
Oh, twenty twenty, I'm a senior this year. Twenty, twenty twenty-four, I'm a senior this year.
Okay, you're a senior this year, so what does the future hold for you?
Right now, I'm planning on going to U N O, U N L, or A N T, H B C U.
And what, what career do you expect to pursue, recognizing that that always changes?
This year, I'm pursuing zoology. Right now, I go to school at Omaha Durling Zoo, so I leave here at twelve o'clock and I go to the zoo and take classes over there, which are more college classes, but I also work with the Penguins, the Penguin exhibit. So I'm in the Penguins and I'm helping out shoveling snow. I just helped move in rocks so they can start breeding or start the mating season coming up. I also pick twigs so the puffins and the other exhibits can start building their nests and stuff like that.
That is so cool. I'll keep an eye out for you next time I visit with my grandsons, okay? You'll be in the, there with the Penguins, right?
Yep.
Okado. Congratulations. You're right. This is a remarkable award and you clearly deserve it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, colleagues? Ms. Juarez.
Miles, I just wanted you to know that when I was in high school, long ago, I know, I also had a community focus when I was on student council because I really enjoyed that and believe me, it just stays in your blood because here I am today still doing community work, right?
Right.
And I do other community work too and it's just, it truly is always satisfying. So thank you for what you do for our community.
Thank you.
Ms. Full.
Congratulations. This is an amazing accomplishment. You sound like an amazing young leader in your community and so I ask you, how politically engaged are you? Do you follow politics? Do you, are you going to register to vote when you turn eighteen?
Yes. Currently, I don't really follow to politics because I'm trying to focus on myself and try and get my life together, but also trying to focus on my community and focus on my work and stuff, so I really don't focus on politics until I really get order, then I really have to focus on politics because I'm, I'm glad to know what, who I vote for.
Great. Yeah, I just ask you that because I see a lot of potential in you because you are a community leader and, you know, doing that community work is a direct correlation to, you know, building power in your community in North Omaha. So I really encourage you to, you know, be civically minded and build political power in your, in your community just by doing exactly what you're doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Casely.
Is it working? Okay. Well, Miles, everything my colleagues have said, congratulations, what remarkable, I think, is, is the key word here this evening. I want to take a quick moment, though, to acknowledge your family because without parental support, guardians, grandparents, aunts, uncles, whoever, all of you, not sure who all of you are, but without family support, you would not be probably here today, so let's give a small round of applause to your family that's with you. Okay, and I heard a lot of different things that you do volunteering besides, I think the Penguin is probably the coolest. I've actually been in the, in the enclosure myself. It's really fun. What is your favorite volunteer activity? What do you enjoy the most?
I like working concession stands. I like food, but.
A little bit of free food, maybe?
Yeah. But I like meeting different people as well as like, it helps me, it helps me talk to people as well with working at concession stands. It's not really about the food, but as well as like, hello, how you doing, seeing how they is and like, how they is presently, are they like doing okay or are they here to support somebody that, family member, but also just like, I also work with my friends as well because we always have a fun time working and doing concession stands.
Volunteering can be even more rewarding when you've got others there that are sharing the same, same goal and have the same passions, so keep up the great work. Thank you so much for being here with us and have a great senior year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
I just want to give a shout out. I can see, I can see you over there. Please stand up, sir. Yeah, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Please stand up and I just want to give a shout out to the Omega Squires, Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity. They're doing a lot in our community and it would just be remiss if I didn't say thank you to them because there are a lot of young men who are graduating, coming through their program, going, going to college and of course, I've worked at U N O in the past and just being able to see the success of those young men is amazing, so please stay connected to where you are right there. So Omega Squires and Mr. Skyler, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, any other? All right, well, thank you again for your leadership. Thank you again for all that, all that you do for the district, for the community. Congratulations on the award. Keep up the great work and we wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you for having me.
Come up and grab a picture if you would. All right, moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications. Mr. Ray.
Head and Vice President Smith and members of the Board and our community, welcome to North High School. We'll be here for the next months, next few months as renovations proceed at TAC. We are excited about those updates. They will improve our work with staff families and community, community members in such a frequently used space. Viewers at home will notice a temporary change to our live stream. While we're at North High, the video will be from one camera. You will see presentations and have high quality audio. Thank you to Principal Colette Nero and North High staff for hosting us. And also thank you to Dr. McFarland and Lindsay Appfel for all their work and prep for this. Tonight's agenda includes an agreement with S E I U Local Two-Two-Six. It offers another solution to ongoing staffing challenges. It allows us to contract for open para positions in special education. We are actively recruiting and hiring qualified staff every day. This agreement does not replace any current employee. It does not eliminate positions we are hiring for. As we onboard a full-time employee for an open para position, we would end the contracted staffing for that role. Thank you also for Local Two-Two-Six, President Steve Owens and the Bargaining Unit members for their understanding of this issue and their ongoing partnership in delivering the best we can for the children we serve. We care very much about the students we serve and we are confronting and rising to the challenges we face. Friday, the Omaha School Employees Retirement System, O S R's, mailed the fall communication to all members. Recipients include all current employees, former employees who are vested in the system and retirees. It outlines our work for successful transfer of O S R's day-to-day management to the Public Employee Retirement Board in twenty twenty-four. Eleven months away, is that correct, Shane? Eleven months away. This, the message highlights the Board of Education's commitment to a strong and healthy retirement system. We have assured O S R's members that communication will continue every six months through the transition next fall. An item on the consent agenda also includes dual enrollment opportunities with Midland University. Through dual enrollment, a high school student can earn college credit for the specific courses. We have agreements with multiple colleges and universities. We offer advanced academies, academics throughout Omaha Public Schools in many different ways. More information about each high school's dual credit offerings are available online. A copy of tonight's Student and Staff Achievements Report will be posted tomorrow to all schools and district homepages under Announcements. Congratulations to our students and staff on these recognitions. That concludes my remarks for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Board comments. Ms. Full.
Thank you. I've had a great past two weeks. It's just really fired me up and rejuvenated me and part of that is because of the Black Votes Matter Political Summit that happened earlier this weekend and we had a lot of national speakers come in and talk to the people of North Omaha and our community about building more political power and really changing things for the better in our community. And it got me fired up. If anybody knows who Justin Pearson is, he was one of the representatives from Tennessee who was ousted and stood up to, you know, white supremacist leadership in Tennessee. So it was really great to have him come and speak to us so we can just get, you know, our eye on the prize when it comes to twenty twenty-four because we are going to have to register more voters, we are going to have to get people who are already registered out to vote and so you should be talking to all your friends, all your family members about voting at next year in twenty twenty-four and if you're going to turn eighteen soon, you should register to vote. Because we really need the young people to show out too, so that was just a really great experience and I want to encourage everybody to get ready for twenty twenty-four. I also want to say thank you to Shamari Huggins and Andrea Joy Pearson for hosting an amazing event at Luli Creative House. It was like a sound bath mental health event and the proceeds that were raised are going to Blackburn High School, one of our alternative programs in O P S and so they were able to raise a pretty good chunk of money and I just want to thank them for doing that and raising money for Blackburn. I also just wanted to say condolences to the Swift family of La Marante Swift. He was a student at Burke and he passed away a couple days ago from gun violence and the healing that we have to do in our community in North Omaha when it comes to violence is real and we need to be supporting our students when they're at home so they can come to school and show up and be able to learn and that's the responsibility that we have to take on as guardians, as parents, as community members. So I just want to say condolences to the Swift family. I've been told there are employee resources for staff members who need to talk to someone and there are counselors for students as well if they need to talk to someone. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, colleagues? Ms. Erdenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Well, Mr. Ray mentioned the S E I, S E I U Paris and the Midlands College credits, so my list is much shorter than usual. What he failed to mention was that we're going to be auctioning some items off as listed in item I twenty-two, including a motorcycle sidecar and Harley Davidson leather saddlebags. So you left that one for me? Thank you very much. I also wanted to mention that I too was able to attend the events that Ms. Full just referred to, both on Friday night and again on Saturday, where Mr. Pearson spoke so passionately and eloquently and purposefully, in every other word you can imagine, about the importance of community engagement and that was, I think, the, the crux of her questions to our earlier guest, but it was a very powerful experience and a really important one and I really enjoyed being able to participate in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Crackey.
Thank you. I'm going to say what I say every meeting and I'm going to just keep saying it. We need parents, grandparents, and guardians to be involved in to help us in the journey of educating our children. We all want them to learn as much as we can. And I want to point out that I had an opportunity to go to Howard Kennedy and downstairs, they are doing such a wonderful job. They had a grant, a Sherwood Grant, that is up in two years. It was a ten-year grant and they are able to make this and poke out things like puzzles and write on them, so I taped it together so it wouldn't fall apart and the other thing they do there is they make, they mold something, they do something to make glass and on that glass, they etch different things like awards. So when people wonder what we're doing in our school system, as a board member, I didn't know we were doing that, but I wanted to share with them and let them know that different things are happening in our schools every day and many things and it just, it thrilled me as I left there. I was just bouncing around because I couldn't believe we would do something like that and it was just wonderful. So I would encourage, I would really like them to come and present to us and share all that with us so people know some of the things we're doing that are unusual and it was very good and so I want to thank you for that and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Juarez.
Okay, good evening, everyone. First of all, I did want to thank all of our staff for setting all of this up for us, so all we have to do is show up and sit down. I sincerely appreciate it. I'm sure it's a lot of work, more than I realize and I wanted to again make comments for the community about our forums that are still left. We have four of them tomorrow at the TAC building at eight A M. MacMillan is at six P M. One Avista, where I will be at six P M. And Norris Middle at seven fifteen. And then our last ones are on Wednesday, six P M. at Westview and seven fifteen P M. at Northwest High. Again, that's to get feedback from our families, community on our superintendent search. So again, I want to encourage everyone to participate. Oh, yes, and we have the online survey available for those who can't attend the forums, so make sure to use that tool also. They do want you to still complete the survey even if you attend the forums. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to our O P S staff and security for keeping our kids safe and mobilizing a team for some of our football games and then again, having a plan organized for our basketball games and those kind of things as we are gathering and we have large populations who are going to be attending those things and just again, to keep our kids safe and so we want to have a safe environment for our students and families to enjoy extracurricular activities. It's been great to have those kind of conversations one-on-one and in small groups, just to make sure that things are going smoothly. We have a great exit plan, entry plan, and those kind of things, so again, I just want to, again, thank you, O P S staff, security, Lisa Utterback, Matt being there just open to hear some of the things, suggestions from our, our community partners to figure out how we can do these things in a, in a great manner and in, in order to have great activities for our families and students to participate in.
All right, thank you. Any other comment, colleagues? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. We have one speaker who has submitted a request to be heard form and the Board has adopted policy eighty-three, forty-six, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about and we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you do not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak but would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland. She will make sure that each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, with the passage of L B eighty-three by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board is, is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the Board to identify himself or herself, including an address, the name of any organization you may represent unless there is a waiver for security reasons and we don't have anyone requesting a waiver tonight. So again, please state and spell your name and give your address. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the Board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let Dr. McFarland know and she will get those from you. It is now six twenty-seven P M. and our first speaker is Deshaun Pillow.
My name is Deshaun Pillow. I am an O P S employee.
And if you could spell your name real quick.
Oh, it's D A S E A N. Last name is Pillow, P I L L O W. I am an O P S employee. I've been working at Omaha South for three years. I didn't fully hear everything that you were saying when it comes to talking about a topic, so if you can just repeat everything since I am up here about regarding the topics.
Yeah, basically, the, the gist of it is if you're going to be talking about a specific staff member or student, please don't mention them by name in your comment.
That is not a problem. Yep. I already fully understand.
All right, we're good to go. Thank you.
So just to talk about a little bit of myself, I have been a para for a long time. Yep.
Yep, sorry. Could you state your address as well?
Address is thirteen, six, oh, three, South Fourteenth Circle, Bellevue, Nebraska. I'm good to go? Yep. Yes, so I have been a para for a while. I know I have sent you guys an email about how I felt about what's been going on at work and so whoever said that you guys felt that I was, did not like kids, that is not the situation. About myself, when I first became a para- About myself, when I first became a para, I worked at Papillion Middle School. That was two years. It's something I love. Four years later, when the kids went off to high school, both of them reached out to me. Went to both of their high school graduations. You know, the only way you get their stuff is from love, you know, doing your job. And right now, I feel like I'm working against my will. You know, if a student is not feeling well, they should have a doctor's note before they have to come back to school. If they are showing bodily fluids that we feel that are uncomfortable for us to clean up as a para, then that should not be something that we have to do. You know, if they are showing blood and we are untrained to do those things, you know, we aren't CNAs. And so why should we have to, you know, do those things that we are untrained for? You know, you put us at risk if a parent, sister-in says that that's our fault, we aren't doing our job. And so they can take that on us. And I feel like, you know, you're putting us at risk as an employee because, you know, we didn't get no type of training. You know, like I don't have a daughter. And so there's times where we have to go in there and help, you know, change tampons, pads, and stuff like that. And that's something that we've never been trained on, never been taught, and stuff like that. And they're sitting there telling us, you know, that's our job because it says in the description, you know, we have the toilet. Like, what's the full description of our job as a para? You know, that's what I fully want to know. Like, you can't keep sending your kids back without a doctor's note because you don't know what's going on. If we're cleaning him and we're saying that he's showing blood, then he needs to stay home until you take him to the doctor and show a doctor's note. And then, and you're not doing that. And you're telling me that I still have to clean him and stuff like that, and the nurse doesn't even know what's going on.
One minute?
And you're supposed to be a nurse. I've been doing the job for several years. And this is the first time I've ever had to deal with these type of problems. And I feel like I shouldn't have to put up with it. Like, I don't understand why they won't take them to the doctor or anything. And they continuously
Thirty seconds.
continuously tell us, you know, this is our job. Like, even to the extent like of certain, you know, how many repeatedly times we have to take certain kids to the restroom. Like, the nurses still have to help out with that. Like, we're not trained. We're there to help educate kids. We're not here to repeatedly take kids to the bathroom.
That's time.
Thank you. All right. Moving to consent agenda. This time, any board member may request that an item on the consent, sorry, on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and voted on separately. Do we have any motions to remove items from the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda this before us.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tealyn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crackey. I apologize. Are there any abstentions? Ms. Cassidy?
I will be abstaining from item I-9, Claim C.
Thank you. Ms. Cassidy?
I'm sorry. That's for my work for Council Great City Schools.
Thank you.
Okay. And I will be abstaining from the same item, Claim C, item I-9, for my work with the OPS Foundation Board of Directors. Thank you.
Ms. Erdnberger? All right. Any further abstentions? All right. Seeing none, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith? Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Foll?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Nainai?
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on. Item J-1A, the Accountability Committee update.
So this is a busy and exciting time in our superintendent search. Since engagement began in May, the search has, the search firm has been interviewed and gathered thousands of survey responses and presented that data to our community. This is the next step in our process. We are listening to staff, families, students, and community members. We're getting feedback in several ways. The survey is open for the second time. We emailed a link to all high school students, staff, and families. The link is also on every school and district website under announcements. The survey is available in multiple languages. In May, people responded in each of those languages. We are working toward the same goal this fall. Last week, community forums began. We're hosting 12 community forums, 10 in person and two virtually. Our search firm runs the forums, taking notes on the discussion. There is at least one forum in each Board of Education sub-district. Several are near to metro bus lines and bilingual liaisons are available at each forum. And again, we encourage everyone to attend. If you did not complete the survey in May, please take it this fall. And for OPS staff, there are six additional forums just for employees. We sent the schedule by email and it's posted online. There are staff forums in North, South, and West Omaha, close to when the school days end. If that doesn't work for you, staff are welcome at the community forums. Questions are the same and feedback is recorded in the same way. Thank you to everyone who is participating. We need you to be a part of the process. Your feedback will be, will help develop the profile of our ideal superintendent. We use that to recruit and hire the best candidate for Omaha Public Schools. Community members are always welcome to contact board members, share your ideas, concerns, or ask questions. Or contact information is online at OPS.org/Board. OPS.org/Board. Yep. So some of the things that we want to kind of address and make sure that we have some discussion on is the accountability staff and the search firm schedule six forums just for employees. There are options in North, South, and West Omaha shortly after the duty days. The goal was to avoid evenings if staff have other commitments. There are already evening community forums, which staff are welcome to join. The questions are the same and feedback counts the same way at any forum and above and beyond our districts. Many community forums options, the six additional staff forums work to provide extra opportunities for our staff employees. If none of the 18 forums work for our staff member, they're welcome to complete the survey and contact any board member directly. Again, so thank you for just being mindful of what we're trying to do, what the process is looking like. And again, engaging in the process as we search for our next superintendent.
Thank you. Any questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdnberger?
I appreciate Mr. Smith's reference to the staff being welcome at the community events. Over the weekend, I heard from several senior high teachers who expressed dissatisfaction that their, the staff forum was within five minutes of their duty day. And getting across town to the event just meant they didn't come. And that was, I'm, I don't know. Should we ever have to do this again? I think that we should probably be a little more mindful of making it clear to staff that if they can't make it, they should come to community events. And second of all, I appreciate that you wanted to avoid evening hours for the staff. But in all honesty, having the event at 3:30, for example, basically eliminates participation. And that was a problem. So hopefully, I know we only have two more days of community events. And hopefully, if there's anybody here that has contact with staff members, they could let them, encourage them if they didn't make it to a staff event to come to one of the community events. Thank you.
Ms. Foll?
Thank you. This is less of a question and more just a message that I wanted to bring. On Saturday, so we had the community forum here at North. And unfortunately, nobody showed up. And that was really disappointing. I know that we have gotten participation in the other community forums that we've went to. And I know that the community here does have interest in our next superintendent and wants to give feedback about what that's going to look like. So, you know, I encourage all community members to stay engaged in this process. And then I also want the district to ask ourselves, what can we do better to get the North Omaha community engaged? For example, I think I saw what we do for advertising, but, you know, we don't advertise in Omaha Star. And I know a lot of community members read that newspaper and appreciate when our community events are posted in there. So I think there are other things that we can do as a district to make it easier for our community members to see what's going on and engage in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues? Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Head. Kind of following on Ms. Foll's comments and doubling back to Mr. Smith's comments. Certainly, if anyone wants to reach out directly to board members, they should do so. And we're happy to take that feedback directly. I also just want to thank the committee for, now that we're having these community forums for, you know, taking the feedback and expanding those events and the timeframes that they were available. I think it's really important that we've got these opportunities for our community to get engaged and to provide their feedback. So again, thank you for making that change.
Any other comments, questions, colleagues? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to action items. Item J-2A, approval of the first reading of policy 6113. Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Head. This policy was on as an information item at our last meeting, and we talked about it briefly then. Certainly happy to take any additional questions at this time. We can do that, I'll take those during the discussion period. For the moment, I'm going to ask for a, I'm going to make a motion on behalf of the committee to approve first reading of 6113.
Perfect. Thank you. We have a motion. Since it's a committee motion, it doesn't require a second. Do we have any discussion questions? Ms. Foll?
Thank you. So, policy 6113. The last paragraph says, "Any visitor to the school buildings and grounds who has been denied access or who has been asked to leave may contact the Office of Family and Community Relations and Student and Community Services to report concerns." But we actually changed that. That's the new reading. And the old reading is going to be, "Any visitor to the school buildings and grounds who has been denied access or who has been asked to leave may appeal to the Office of Community School and Family Engagement." And so my question is, why did we change that? And are we going to be taking away the ability for visitors who were told, you know, you don't have access to these grounds anymore? Are we taking away the ability for them to appeal that decision? Because now it just says that they can report the concerns. It doesn't say anything about appealing it. So.
Yeah, thanks for that question. I asked the exact same question. And really, what it comes down to is, we made a change, not recently. We made a change a while ago to move to a more collaborative method so that we can work with any families that are having those kinds of concerns to find some kind of resolution for them to visit when it's appropriate, while also taking into consideration any of the concerns that staff might have raised about those members. So really, what it reflects is that we're taking a more collaborative approach and we're matching our language to that and what we've been doing for a while now.
Okay. So just, but explicitly, does it get, does it eliminate the ability for a person to appeal the decision?
Yeah. It's, I mean, I would say that it's not as, it's not a formal appeal, but that's exactly what's happening. If there's an issue that's happening at the school level, they can come to this department and they're going to work with them to find a solution, again, more collaboratively than a formal review, appeal. Yeah.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, colleagues? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdnberger? Foll?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez? Crackey? Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Nainai?
Motion carries. Thank you. And there are no receipted reports this evening. So moving to closed session. Mr. Smith?
We may make it run in our heels. So let me remind the board, the purpose of foreclosed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury. This is you? So I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent and interim secretary to the board and legal counsel, the chief of district operations and talent services, counsel, real estate, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
All right. We have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second? Second by, was that Ms. Foll? All right. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy? Erdnberger? Foll?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Nainai?
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of public interest and the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent, interim secretary of the board, the chief of district operations and talent services, and legal counsel, real estate, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 6:48 p.m.
Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at 7:43 PM. Let the record reflect, the board meeting adjourned at 7:43 PM.